Good evening. Good evening, I am calling this meeting to order at 5 o'clock. I'm going to acknowledge meeting status. Members of the public may directly address the board by attending in-person meetings and submitting a public comment card. The board will not take public comment through the online platform and does not guarantee online streaming should that platform malfunction for any reason. Members of the public are encouraged to share their thoughts and concerns with our board president, Maddie Cloud, me, at mcloud@petk12.org if they're not able to attend in person. Do we have comments from the public on closed session items? Seeing no public, I adjourn to closed session. Good evening, I'm calling this meeting back in session at 6:06. I'm reporting out on closed session and pursuant to government code section 54956.9, the board voted 3 to 2 to approve the employment report. We will also be going back into closed session after the meeting. Okay. Olivia Leonard, our student board member is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in all.
Okay. Okay, site reports, we have Kenilworth Junior High, come on up.
Hi, my name is Ella Weir.
Hello, my name is Gabriella Flores and we are representing Kenilworth Junior High.
Building a sense of community between students and staff is one of Kenilworth's core values. It is only when students and staff feel a strong sense of connection to one another that there is an increase in student motivation, engagement, and enjoyment. At Kenilworth, we wholeheartedly agree that relationships build community. We invite you to watch our site report video.
Welcome. Schools are built of students and staff. Everyone has a role with their own responsibilities. And all together, we make a community, helping each other and building trust. Relationships build community.
Students and staff love to play.
Let's hear what both have to say.
Questions, students, what helps you build a relationship with a teacher? Teachers, how do you foster relationships with students?
I have a teacher here and she's like my best friend. She's helped me through middle school and she's like a figure I can look to. Building a relationship with a staff member is like really good because like it gives you like someone to talk to, it gives you like a trusted adult and that's really good to have.
What helps me build a relationship with a staff member is to gain their trust and just be like super friendly with him and just make a normal like relationship.
So what helps me build a relationship with a staff member, which is when they're helping and they don't like are rude to you and they just help you when you need things.
One of the staff members is that I can talk to them and we have a connection where we can build trust. They also always ask how my day is going and things that are going on in my life. I feel like I can really talk to them and tell them everything that's going on.
Hi, Mr. E, and I believe being consistent is very important to build relationships with students. I believe when the students know what to expect, it gives them the confidence for their own success.
I foster relationships with students by listening to them and especially when they're talking about things that don't necessarily have to do with school. I'm in a lucky position because I get to talk to people about what books they like or what are their interests so we can help find books that match their interests.
I build relationships with students by following the simple rule of treating everybody with dignity and respect. I take the time to get to know students, so whenever I have somebody visiting me in my office, I always ask them how their day is going or what's new with them and try to find out as much information about them as I can. I love to walk around and say hi to people and check in with them as well. I truly believe that if we build community, it makes us great.
There's not one thing, certain thing that I do to have relationships with students, not one thing that I'm looking forward and looking forward to doing. It's just that I want to see students smile. I want them to feel comfortable with me because I feel comfortable with students automatically. I think that that helps to create the relationship is that I enjoy being with them.
One of the biggest ways I try to connect with students is just by being present. Every day that I'm on campus, I am out at break and lunch. That gives me a chance to say hi to students, ask how they're doing, and just be available. I want students to feel seen, to feel heard, and feel valued here at Kenilworth.
When students and staff have good relationships, school feels more like a community. It's easier to ask for help, be yourself, and work together. Everyone feels more comfortable and respected and that makes school a better place for everyone. Relationships build community.
Relationships build community.
School is so much more than the classroom. Taking time to foster relationships enhances the junior high experience. Whether students and staff are laughing together, playing together, or learning together, it all adds up to the same thing, community. Thank you so much for watching our video.
Thank you. That was wonderful. It was really great. It was really different. Thank you. Oh, okay, so I guess moving along, the budget advisory committee update?
All right, thank you. I just wanted to give the board a quick update regarding previous discussions and items that are on the agenda for this evening. The budget advisory committee met twice over the last month to make a recommendation to the board for the use of the remaining elementary parcel tax that was unallocated in roughly $400,000. The committee voted eight in favor with one abstention to use the Measure E funds to reinstate the elementary nurse position and add additional instructional assistance at each elementary school site.
That's wonderful. And so that's using the old parcel tax money, the leftover parcel tax money?
Yeah, of the new Measure E that we went out to for last year.
Yes.
Yes, so now all of it is allocated.
Oh, I see.
The $1.4 million, the $1 million had already been previously allocated.
Perfect, oh. Yay! We have our nurse and we have aides, it's great.
There's been a lot of conversations around our littlest learners that will be joining us in TK starting in July. They will be the ripold age of three at our year-round schools, so looking for additional instructional aides to really help, one at each site to help with the littles.
That's wonderful, at each site. Thank you, that was, and thank the committee. Okay, so now we have comments from the public on special recognition reports, presentations, and non-agendized items. Let me read the board language for public comment. Under government code section 54954.3A, members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest, providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district. While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services, and/or employees, the district does have a policy BP1312.1 specific to complaints against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment on non-agendized items period, which is now. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a three-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. Commenters may not cede their time to others. Do we have any public comment? We do not have public comment tonight. Moving forward, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Board president, I just would like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'm just requesting the board remove agenda item 15.2.1, approval of the bond program and construction management firm, and we'll bring that back to the board at a later meeting. We'd like to do a little bit more work on that item.
Okay.
All right, I move to remove the agenda with the amendment to remove 15.2.1.
I second.
Can I ask a question before you go? What are the implications of us removing it from the agenda? I just want to make sure, because I know like at this time of year, we have things that are like really time sensitive, and so I just want to be mindful of that, like what implications would this have? We waited till the end of May.
I'll let our CBO answer that, but I'm happy to also chime in.
Some of the, I guess the implications would be, what we're looking for is approval to begin contract negotiations and those negotiations do take time. We're also getting ready to do our ratings calls to go out for our bond, so it's really about timing. We want to make sure that we have a completed contract with the firm in place as we start our bond, our pre-bond implementation planning. We definitely need a firm in place in order to do that planning.
And I'm unclear about why we're removing it from the agenda.
I could answer that. Thank you. So this was, we, I felt that this was, that this was too rushed. We don't have, I understand that we don't have the, any bonds yet, but I also feel that I did not want to move forward quickly with a firm without knowing exactly what the parameters were for that. This is just the firm, this isn't the contract. I have no idea how much money we're talking about in terms of the eventual contract with these, with this firm. And also, we are in the midst of a facilities master plan and I just felt like I would prefer to have that in place or at least know what's in it and for the firm to know what's in it before we went forward with the firm. I think mainly I just needed more information and so, and the information on this was not adequate for me, you know, to find out whether I was, you know, once again, the process, making sure that I feel like the bonds, which the people of Petaluma have graciously and generously are going to be paying for for many years, is, you know, that everything is set and if I'm going to vote for it, I need to know that.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Yeah.
And I'd just like to add, it would be helpful because I do think there is, it's not a huge pressing need, but I'd like to bring it forward. And so one of the things I'd like to recommend is if I could have two trustees work with Amanda and work with me on getting something ready for the next board meeting, but it would be helpful to have a few trustees working with Amanda and me so that we would know what you want to see in the next, next time we bring it forward to you. So if there's any interested parties, that'd be great.
I volunteer, I love these bonds so much.
I'm here as well.
But I guess I'm still not sure also why we're not moving forward, if it's not going to be, like if it's not going to tie our hands in any way or if it's going to delay any implementation of the bonds, because I know we have so many projects to do and we had like that.
But we don't have the projects yet, that's the thing. And also, I don't know whether it will tie our hands or not, and that's what I want to find out, that's what the contract will be. This is before the contract. It just seemed like they had only just agreed on the firm a few days ago, and so we're getting the name of the firm, we were just going to get the name of the firm tonight. I just had this, I mean, you can certainly not move it, I mean, I understand, but I just felt like I needed more information about the whole hiring process and who these people were, because they're going to be responsible for 220 million, 225 million dollars.
Right. Do you feel like you'll get that information in three weeks? I guess I just want to make sure that we're clear on what's happening.
Yeah, I feel like if I, I feel like if I had a presentation that outlined what the process was and why this particular firm stood out, I would feel better.
And that's something we can't answer tonight? Looking at you. Sorry, putting you on the spot.
No, that's okay, I do not have a presentation prepared.
But do you have, can you answer any of the concerns around?
I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Okay. I mean, I don't have any specific questions, but I'm, I don't know.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda without the action, the action item 15.2.1, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes. Okay. Okay, report on activities of the school board members. Boy, people were busy. We had Kenilworth Junior High School track meet, Harold Mahoney Community Achievement Awards, of which Joanna's daughter is in the top 10 at Casa Grande in junior year. We had the LCAP meeting, the Budget Advisory Committee Panel for League of Women Voters, and the Panel for Educational Advocacy. We had McDowell Open House, the Snack Committee, West Side Band Concert, Safety and Climate Committee Meeting, and the Peace Poll Dedication at Cherry Valley. Sure?
It was incredible, I had tears in my eyes, but the most incredible part of it was that it was all student-led. The students decided what languages to put on the poll, they, it was just, it was such a wonderful ceremony and the kids were so, they were just articulate and wonderful and I was really impressed by what they chose to do. So I highly recommend to go by there and check it out.
Good, I know, I felt the same way at Casa, it was great.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I was joking about the Harold Mahoney, but honestly, it was a nice event, Olivia led the pledge of allegiance. It's, it was, it's just nice to see, I mean, I always get emotional because I like know some, I've known some of the kids like Ava since they were like in fourth grade and seeing them graduate, so yeah, it was just, it was, it was good to see those kids, especially that you've watched since kindergarten, so.
Yeah, it was great. There, it's a wonderful thing that our community does. Okay, we also had the Valley Oaks Open House and, oh, the Valley Vista, how do you say that?
Sena Latina.
Sena Latina. Boy, good food. It was really good, that was really fun. And then I went to some of those and, oh, the RSP teachers meeting with Luann and me. Brian, do you have anything to add?
I have the pleasure of joining Ellen at the Safety and Climate meeting, it was the last one of the year, but excited to get some background, meet the other committee members, and to participate in full next year.
Good.
I also went to the West Side Band Concert, my grandson was in it, but what really impresses me is all these kids from elementary schools are playing together and it's the, I think it's the first time they play together and they're great. And also, I want to commend our music department because those kids are learning to read music and that's such an amazing skill, so.
Oh, yeah. I just have to say, I went to the West Side Concert also and I could not believe with those music teachers, that entire Petaluma High School gym was packed with musicians, there was not even a place to stand, and they were littles. And the fact that those music teachers could get them to even play a tune together, for me, was miraculous. I just thought it was super fun and when the older kids played, it was really great. It was just a lot of great energy in there and boy, you got to give credit to those music teachers, they really did a great job, so.
That's great. I love it, I know. Okay, and then we have Olivia went to the PHS Baseball Senior Night, PJHS Track Meet, the West Side Band Festival. Were you in it when you were little?
Um, no, I, but my sister, brother, and boyfriend were all in it, so that was a three-in-one for me, yeah.
That's great. And then Financial Literacy Spirit Week.
So our business department decided to throw a spirit week, usually it's ASB who designs those, but every day was for a different like stage, so there was like a college day, retirement day, a job day, and a bunch of other fun days. So ASB had a lot of fun with that and we were really like excited to see someone else do like spirit days, we were like, oh, what do we want to do? So that was really fun, yeah.
Have you done that before?
No.
I think that's such a great idea.
Yeah.
Was there a lot of spirit there?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely on the like popular days, like the retirement day was like pajama day, so everyone loves wearing pajamas. Oh, yeah, it's a popular one, yeah, for sure.
Well, and I'm going to take this opportunity for the two of, our two student board members to model where you're going to school. Can you guys stand up?
They're both going to San Diego State.
Yeah, that's so awesome. So now you're gonna, you're thinking about a major in?
Leadership Studies.
Isn't that perfect?
It's very on-brand, yeah.
I love it. And Ava?
Also staying on-brand with the person I am and studying neuroscience.
There you go, oh my goodness.
It's a new one.
Okay, and then you also went to the Community Achievement Awards.
Yep.
Wonderful, okay. Good job, everyone. No kidding. That is impressive. That's so cool. Okay, now we have comments from the public on consent items. Seeing no one, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
I second. Any discussion? Oh, I have one. Oh, yeah. I just had a question about, on contracts, and I wanted Amanda to kind of talk about these large expenditures under food services.
Thank you, as you can see, there are quite a few contracts this evening for food services. We are using the remaining funds from our kitchen infrastructure and training grant, which must be fully expended by June 2025. The equipment purchases include essential upgrades across several of our campuses. For items requiring installation, we used a formal bid process, we received competitive quotes that were obtained for direct purchases, and we used our qualified, excuse me, qualified vendors were selected. In all cases, the lowest responsive bid and responsible vendors were selected in alignment with both state and grant requirements.
Great, thank you.
It's so great, I know I might kill you a little bit to see all this money spent, but I love seeing like the, because it is a high dollar amount, but just seeing like the improvements that are being made to all the facilities, especially with all the work that folks have done over the past couple of years with the Snack Committee and really investing in food services, like this is super cool that this is happening, yeah.
This is really the next step, this was, this year has been step one in bringing back the food service program to the elementary sites with the salad bar. These purchases will allow us to, at our sites where the food is stored, store more fresh foods and then have ways to serve more hot items at the elementary schools.
Can you, I don't know whether you can actually answer this, but I was just wondering if, how much of the Snack Committee's recommendations went into some of the purchases or at least, you know, like the areas for, that needed the most improvement?
Really, the Snack Committee, Brian, has been focusing on the overarching goals of the food service program and how it ties to the district's wellness policy. What do we want to see implemented, what types of foods we are serving? For the equipment specifically that was purchased, Petaluma High has needed a new refrigerated freezer for many years. It is like walled off in a room, and so that's where that came from. The freezer refrigerator at the warehouse allows for us to buy more, so really, we looked through, so one of the reasons why it took us, the CBO and me did not like waiting until May to purchase something that is due in June, but the reason why is we took this last year to really utilize the funds and determine what equipment and resources could help our program the best.
Fabulous, yes.
And I just want to say, being on the Snack Committee, that DeForre, he is really, really good at what he does and he listens, takes in suggestions and, of course, and I've been bugging him about salad bars at the high school, so I'm, I was really glad to see that. Of course, and I've been bugging him about salad bars at the high school. So I'm, I was really glad to see that.
Yes, he has been. He is such a lovely addition to our team.
Any response? Okay. All right. I need a vote.
Sorry, I have one more. Uh, we're on the consent calendar. Uh, so let's see, let me pull it up. Um, so we're also doing the second reading and adoption of, uh, board policy through three, one, two contracts. So, um, I just had a, a follow-up request, uh, to Amanda and, and others. Um, this is, uh, both on contracts, it, it references the Conflict of Interest Code and, and the newly, um. Let's say more aggressive Levine Act, which is, uh, the Campaign Contributions Disclosure, uh, Rule on Conflict of Interest for Board Members. Um, a lot of districts across the state are now implementing new disclosure rules on, uh, bidders. Um, so that, uh, board members and staff, uh, have more information on. Who actually controls campaign contributions at the companies, whether they have any, uh, again, have provided gifts or. You know, have family members that, uh, work at the, you know, the district or et cetera, et cetera. So can we follow up and, and see if there's a way to, um. Have additional information, uh, provided to the board of, um, when companies, you know, are, are bidding so that. We understand any kind of potential conflict of interest and, you know, campaign, you know, obviously campaign contributions. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Did you want to, um. Pull that and have it amended?
No, this is a supplemental item, but it is not in conflict whatsoever with the, uh, board policy.
Okay. Okay. Any other question? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Um, comments from the public on action items. Uh, no one is coming forward. Um, so our first action item is fifteen point one, point one. Resolution two, four, two, five, dash, V, five, five of the Board of Education, Petaluma City. And Petaluma Joint Union High School District on final action on resolution and decision not to reemploy. Certificated employees for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Do I have a motion?
Um, sorry, sorry, Maddie. Uh, just point of order. I think, um, we are going to call, haven't, didn't we decide that we were going to ask for a presentation first? And Q and A with the presenter and then we do motion.
For the action items, excuse me?
For the action item?
Can you say it again, Ryan?
So. I believe the correct order of operations under the Roberts Rules is that the board president calls the action item. Um, the staff will present the item and then, because we don't have the full briefing on the action item to have a motion and then a second on, which then. Limits it to, let's say.
Thank you.
Debate amongst the trustees.
Okay. So we already, we don't have it. So let's have the discussion of this that goes to Luann.
Yeah, I got this.
It's actually you. Sorry, Jason.
Yeah, no, um, I appreciate, uh, the opportunity to talk about this. So we did do a PKS in. Late February, early March, I can't remember, but we had a number of positions of certificated positions. Uh, these are the four, uh, uh, indivi- these are four individuals that are connected to the positions that we had moved to eliminate. Um, I know there was presentation earlier, um, about the board, about the, uh, budget advisory. One of the positions recommend that was discussed in there, the nurses is on this list. So if the board, the board should consider that as they move this list forward, whether or not. You want to follow the advice of the budget advisory and amend this before voting on it, uh, or not, but it is included in these four positions.
I would like to amend. Is now the time to do that?
Well, I guess if there's, if there's any other questions first, but you're. Well, and, um, obviously, uh, we, since this is in, in public, like we only using numbers and we're not identifying. We, I know who, who is who, so you don't need to say the number, but you can indicate what positions that you're, that you're wanting to discuss, but, um. Yeah, we do that for confidentiality.
So do we? Oh, go ahead, Caitlin.
Can you remind, I see four employee numbers. So can you remind us what the positions associated with those employees?
Yeah, the positions that we eliminated, we had a posi- a principal on special assignment. We had a coordinator of. I can't remember the name, but coordinator of alternative schools. There was a coordinator connected to, uh, CTE. And then there was the certified school nurse. So three of them were administrative positions. One was a non-administrative certificated position.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, we, we heard earlier, but just to re- to, to discuss again on this agenda item. Um, the budget advisory, uh, committee identified a funding source, uh, for the nurse position.
Yes, they, their recommendation is to allocate Measure E parcel tax, um, to reinstate the nurse position.
Is this one-time funding or a continuous funding?
This is funding that we will receive for eight years unless the board elects to go out and, um.
Do it all again.
What, what the, wow. Not moratorium, where it continues.
Renew.
Where it continues forever. Sounds like in perpetuity.
In perpetuity.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bree.
So I want to thank the, the budget advice, uh, advisory committee, uh, for their time and effort, um, not only, uh, for the latest meetings and recommendations, but through the entire year, they have given up. Uh, so much time, uh, volunteer time to provide guidance on this. I know this was a difficult budget year that potentially is going to be, uh, more difficult, um, as we see, um, you know, the May revisions coming out. Um, but at the same time, uh, back in February. This was, we heard from dozens of parents and, uh, faculty or, uh, staff members. Um, how important this position was, how the needs of the school district had changed. Um, and how much time and effort and worry like not having a, uh, additional school nurse, nurse as part of the school district would cause. And so, uh, I'm excited that we are moving forward. This has been a priority of mine. I'm very, uh, happy that this is the outcome. Um, so I just want to thank everyone's, uh, time and effort on, on this front.
Good. Thank you. Great. Okay.
I move to approve an amended resolution, um. That does not include the certified nurse.
Okay.
I will second that.
Excellent. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay. The motion passes. Okay. Our next one is approval of, uh, Resolution two, four, two, five, dash, five, six. The elimination of classified positions for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Jason.
So we did eliminate a number of classified positions for most of our employees. We were able to get them into other positions. So. That's usually a strategy that we're trying to do is, is even more eliminating positions, trying to protect our people. And, uh, there, we have one, one employee that we were, was not. That it was, what we were able to offer was not a match for them. And so they're, we're moving forward with, um. With the layoff in that case. It's just one. The, uh, we were. Successful in all the other positions, finding other spots for people and keeping them within the district and employed. And, and we're always working towards something that's as commensurate as possible.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any comments? Okay. I need a motion.
I move to approve.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Uh, the motion passes and thank you. Thank you to all of you for working really hard. That's amazing. All right. Next up is fifteen point three, point one, point three, approval of the revised student attendance calendars for twenty-five, twenty-six. Traditional and year-round schools.
Okay, so in consent, we just approved the new salary schedules that reflect the approval of the agreement with our certificated union. Um, part of that you'd see in those schedules, th- this year, there was an increase that retroed back to. The beginning of this year, we also have a salary schedule that begins July one of twenty-five, that is two less days. So we, we did two less days, but we couldn't go backwards. We have to go forwards. It's already in the calendar year. This, um, but we already have approved calendars for next year. So these calendars now match. Um, that reduction of days for the next two years and we are reducing, um, one professional development day and one teacher work day. Uh, for next year. And these were two of the three days that we just, uh, recently added in a few years ago.
Excellent. Okay. Any discussion?
I move to approve the revised students attendance calendars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passes. All right. Next, uh, fifteen point one, point four, second reading. Board Policy four, one, one, two, point two, certification.
So, uh, we looked at this, uh, as a discussion item. Last time, the second reading, this, uh, board policy around certification elists what those are. The most timely part of that is the new TK. Uh, qualifications for our teachers. We have a lot of TK teachers we're trying to place. It's been tough. So. This will be a big help to honoring the experience of many of our teachers.
Fabulous. All right. I need a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. All right. Now we are at fifteen point one, point five, second reading administrative regulation for. One, one, two, point two, certification.
Yeah. So this is the partner regulation that goes with it, um, and outlining and the new regulations and also guidelines.
I move to approve AR four, one, one, two, point two.
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Jason. Uh, then we are, um, we tabled, uh, two point one. We are going to fifteen point three, point one, second reading board policy zero, four, two, zero, school plans and site councils. Tony.
Uh, yes, this is just an, uh, update from CSBA, really just outlines the federal requirements of. The school sec council's responsibility around the SIPs, the alignment with the LCAP and the SIPs as well, as well as if there's real, any real material change to the SIPs, they would go to the board unless the board choose, elects to. Um, vote on it every year for the school, uh, school plans. Um, and also, um. Um, you know, if the school, if the, uh, SIPs aren't approved for whatever reason, and it, it needs to be articulated to the school sec council so they can make any revisions to bring it back to the board approval.
All right. Any, uh, any comments? Um, I, so we have chosen to do our SIPs every year. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. I need a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. It passes. The motion pass, passes. Uh, fifteen point three, point two, second reading board policy zero, five, one, O, school accountability report card.
This is also an updated, uh, CSBA language around, um, ensuring that we're using the model template. And if we're not using the model template, that we check to make sure that it's adhering to the requirements or the criterias within the model template. And that every three years of it's, we're not using the model template that we make sure we double check to make sure that it is in alignment with the criterias. Um, and also, uh, reiterating the February first deadline for the SARC every year. By February first, the SARC needs to be approved by the board so that then we then, um, notice the public and where they can find the SARC and upload it to CDE so that it's all. Um, you know, adhering to the requirements.
Excellent. Any comments? I need a motion.
Move to approve item fifteen point three, point two.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Uh, next fifteen point three, point three, second reading board policy zero, four, two, zero, dash, sorry. Point four, one, charter school oversight.
Uh, this, uh, board policy, um, is again updated language around the authority of the district to inspect, um, the, the, any charter schools that we have in our, under our preview. Um, monitoring, uh, to determine its compliance, not only fiscally, but also academically and making sure that charter schools are adhering to. Um, what's written in their, uh, charter petition, uh, especially around goals and student achievement. Um, and as well as, uh, the budget piece that, uh, would be shared with, uh, business services, uh, ensuring that they are also, also adhering to the fiscal responsibilities as a charter.
Excellent. Comments? All right. A motion?
Move to.
Go for it. No. Now you go.
Move to approve board policy zero, four, two, zero, point four, one.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Uh, fifteen point three, point four, second reading board policy zero, four, two, zero, point four, two, charter school renewal.
Uh, this is also an update, um, last revised in twenty twelve and this is, uh, so is, so we're updating its, um, its language. It's really just going over the requirements for, uh, and the criterias of why we would renew or deny, uh, a charter that's going through a renewal process. It's, uh, probably if, one of the longer board policies that we have, but it does detail a lot of the, um. Um, you know, if a school is under, um, um, assistance, for example, if we can deny or not deny. Um, the criterias for renewing five years and seven year or deny approval or denying two year or, um. And if schools are under differentiated assistance, what that looks like in regards to the renewal process and, you know. Fiscal impacts, um, uh, if that counts as, um, an op- if we can, um, renew based on, uh, fiscal, uh. You know, criterias that they, they may or may not be able to, to adhere to essentially, um. Um, just laying out the criterias for, for which, which site, which charter schools, how they're, how they can be renewed, um, be renewed or granted. Uh, or even extended based on various criterias. There's a three-tier criterias laid out in here. Also around alternative education, if a charter school is identified as an alternative ed, um, whether they can be denied or not based on their definition of how they've been identified, um. Under that, uh, criteria. So it just lays out a lot of detailed explanations of the process and, and why. And how the board can renew, deny or extend, uh, charter.
Excellent. Um, our newest charter at, uh, Valley Vista is a five-year, isn't it?
Correct.
Renewal. Okay.
Five.
All right. I need a motion.
I move to approve, approve item fifteen point three, point four.
I second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next, we have fifteen point three, point five, overnight field trip request for approval.
Uh, this is Petaluma High School's annual, um, ASB kind of, uh. Activity that they do every year and, and, and maybe one of the school board members can, can talk about it a little bit more, but essentially it's an annual activity. They, they stay at the campus overnight. They have. Icebreakers, they plan the, for the year, they, you know, do kind of a lot of team building stuff, um, talk about other activities that happens on campus. It seems like a fun night. Um, yeah.
I believe that's our ASB camp, which is our, I won't be there because I'll be graduated, but. Um, it's, it's basically just a way to get the class, um, together and get everyone to know each other before the school year starts. Cause when ASB starts, we start with like, we, we just have a million things to do. So it's really nice to be able to get to know all the, especially all the new freshmen and we do a lot of competitions and like Tony said, icebreakers and we stay the night. Um, and we just have a lot of fun. So, yeah, it was really fun. Last year I got to plan it. So.
I have a question, Tony, about the fee. If this is a class they're taking, why is there a fee associated with participating in the overnight?
I think that's probably for the sweatshirts.
A hundred and fifteen dollars?
I don't know.
Yeah, what kind of sweatshirt is that? You got a little.
Definitely not. That is not.
What's happening?
It could be, oh, it could be for the food, actually. It could be for the food, but I don't remember it being that much last year.
That's what I'm wondering because.
Cause we get a keynote sometimes, like we.
Taking a class, you shouldn't have to pay to participate.
And there's no transportation or hotel costs.
Yeah, they're sleeping in the science building.
Yeah, I did not, I did not think it was that much last year, but I could be wrong.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is.
It's a different charging?
This is through, uh, parent, parent donations. Yeah.
So I'm wondering, is it okay to charge for, for, because it's a class? Isn't this, is this a class? It's a class, right? It's not like a club. It's, is it okay to charge for a class?
So it's a, it's a class activity that doesn't necessarily, it's not like a requirement to be a part of the class. I think it's an activity that they want to do, and so they fundraise for it or they get parent donations.
Parents, a hundred percent.
Parent donations to, to, you know, provide whatever cost there may be. And then maybe that's something we can investigate exactly what that cost may be. If it's clothing, food, that wouldn't necessarily be appropriate using, you know, funds to do so. And so therefore, you know.
Yeah, because I feel like last year, the only thing that I was paying for was just my sweatshirt and whatever swag we decided on. But it, I feel like our ASB general funds paid for the rest, but I'm not, all I can ask.
Yeah. Yeah, we can also look at last year, how much the charge was, but it just feels like if all the kids except for the two, that's parents don't now want to pay the hundred and fifteen dollars. Like, it's part of the class for the kids to do the overnight. And so I would hope that they offered to pay for the people who couldn't pay? Or it wasn't just like a, you need to pay the money?
It shouldn't cost.
If you're a part of the class.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't cost anything to attend, but if it's things like you're getting something that you're taking with you, then like a sweatshirt. But then those.
But it also doesn't say what that's for. It just says cost for each student to attend is a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and fifteen dollars. There's, like, there's some, someone said there's no, Caitlin said there's no transportation.
I know it's two nights and three days, so I'm wondering if it's like food. I mean, they must be.
Because usually we have the freshmen do breakfast, sophomore, like, we all do, like, and then we get usually dinner catered. But I don't know if that.
It just doesn't feel right to make the kids pay.
That much, I think it was like maybe fifty.
Well, there might be confusion that it's like thirty-six hundred is the cost of making it all happen. And they just divided it by the number of students and they're not actually asking families for a hundred and fifteen dollars. Like, I think there's a lot of different, the form is still a little confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
I'm not, yeah.
I can literally ask my teacher tomorrow what it is.
But we got to prove this tonight. So, I mean, and the thing is like, if it's, if it's a hundred and fifteen dollars, you know, like you're saying, broken up between the thirty-two kids, but they're in the class. So should we even be charging if it's part of the class?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it might not even be charged. I think it's, I think it's the form being confusing and they're saying this is what the cost is to feed each of these kids. Not necessarily that it is, we're going to each family saying we need a hundred and fifteen dollars.
But saying that the parent donation was a hundred percent of the, where the cost came from.
Well, the date of the trip is not until, looks like July. So can we take a little bit? So you can hold off and then we can get the information and bring it back then later in May.
And like, I want them to have their overnight, but again, if, like, if you sign up for yearbook, you sign up for whatever. Yeah. Alk, if you sign up for leadership, I don't even know if we're even allowed to charge for a student to participate.
So anytime they could, like, music class band, if they're going on a field trip, there needs to be, you know, somebody has to pay or fundraise or something like that. So this is what.
But it's a required part, but it's a required part of the class.
It's, it's not required.
Like graded or required to get in or anything.
But if everyone goes except for two kids.
But we, we also, like, if someone feels that they can't pay it, where my teacher, like, we have our ASB funds that can just do that. I, I don't know, I don't remember it being that much that last year.
Yeah, and like, and I understand the value of having the overnight, I just.
Yeah, we've had it every year since forever. So it's definitely like essential and it's definitely needed for, especially since the beginning of year is homecoming and just chaotic. But, yeah.
I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I just am opposed if we are charging and we're not supposed to be charging for something that's part of the class experience.
Would you like to table it until next meeting? Yes.
Yeah, and I would also want to know if we're even allowed to do this. Because I know, like, when, like, teachers charge for books or for other things, like, we were told that's against ED Code to charge for class materials. And if this is part of being an ASB and we're charging a hundred and fifteen dollars per family, I don't even know if we're even allowed to do that. And/or if it's clear that, okay, the ten kids who couldn't pay, because it's not what it says here. I just would want more clarity on it.
So I need a motion?
Okay.
I move to table the field trip request.
I second.
Can I amend to table it until the next meeting? Can someone second my amendment? Yeah, perfect, all right.
All right, all those in favor of tabling the overnight field request until the next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Excellent. Thank you, Joanna. Important information. Okay, we're done with action items. Comments from the public on discussion and information items. Discussion item, oh, sorry, comments from the public? There are none. Discussion item seventeen point one, point two. Sorry, point two, one. There is nothing under seventeen point one. Seventeen point two, point one. First reading Board Policy and Administrative Regulation 3230, Federal Grant Funds.
Yes, thank you. Tonight we bring forward an updated Board Policy. This policy was last updated in 2018. Some of, not the worst. So what does, yes, changes in this policy. They now include detail elements from two CFR 200s, such as internal control procedures, accurate tracking of awards and reporting standards, because this is for federal grants. It also clarifies language on staff training mandates. And like twice in there, it talks about internal controls. So that's a really big piece of this policy. And it does change the reporting deadlines for performance reports. They used to be due within ninety days and now it's no later than a hundred and twenty days after the grant ends.
Thank you. Any comment? Questions?
I'm sure we'll have to change it again soon, but it feels a little bit like vacuuming before a tornado or something, but we might as well.
We'll see if we ever get a federal grant again. Okay, seventeen point two, point two. First reading Administrative Regulation 3231, Impact Aid.
Thank you. So this AR is, I was just double checking, is a new administrative regulation for our district. The purpose is that the aid offsets loss of local property tax revenue due to federally exempt land, supports education services for students living on military bases, Indian lands or other federal property. The reason why we are bringing this regulation forward is that we have always followed the federal impact aid requirements. We did not have a form, we currently do not have a formal policy. What this does, it is it establishes clear procedures for parent pupil surveys, verification of eligibility and record keeping. It defines responsibilities for staff overseeing the data collection, application submissions and audit compliance. The detailed consultation requirements with the American Indian tribes and families, including annual, annual opportunities for feedback and required written responses to recommendations. So this is really centered around record keeping and compliance. So this is the first read. We will return to the next board meeting for approval.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, excellent. Okay, seventeen point two, point three. First reading Board Policy 3470, Debt Issuance and Management.
Thank you. The reason why we are bringing forward this board policy is that California Government Code 8855I requires school districts to adopt a formal debt management policy prior to issuing any new debt. This policy ensures financial practices and legal compliance. So this lays out the supports of our capital needs. The policy framework includes guidelines for issuing debt, criteria for selecting financing methods, and oversight roles for staff and advisors that are involved in the issuance, compliance and reporting. This helps us with transparency and accountability of our disclosure filings with CDIAC and the MSRB. This also is another policy that is focused around internal controls, audit compliance and ongoing monitoring of outstanding obligations.
Great. I did have a question, because I, I was just kind of like, have we not had this before? Because we've certainly issued bonds before. So I was just wondering, so this is an update, right?
Yes, this was last updated.
I know, but it says it's new.
April, oh, does it say that in the, I apologize. It was last, excuse me, it was adopted in April of 2018.
Okay, great. That was my only, just for snickety, sorry. Okay, any other? Okay. We are on to future business. Anybody with future business?
Yes, Ava? Just something, I feel like I've noticed a lot as a student board member that could be beneficial for the future is having a portion of like the application for, like the field trip request form that if there's funding required, talking about exactly what that funding is for. So that way, like, I feel like this has happened a lot where then we sit here and then there's a lot of questions about like the moral dilemma of if students should be paying for it and then what are they paying for? And I feel like it would save time and energy if there's a way to alter that, that document.
I believe that you have created a new document for field trips?
This was it, yes.
Oh, this was it?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Well, I know, I agree, because the burden shouldn't be on like Olivia to be like, this is what I think it's for or for Ava. You know, you guys are here to share how valuable, valuable of an experience it was for you. But then also like Ava's saying, it shouldn't also be on you to justify where the costs lie. So I think that's a great idea.
I did go back and look at last year's item. So I did note that it was a hundred and ten dollars per student and in the line said student pays.
Inflation for that last five dollars.
But Olivia, you're saying that you don't remember that being the cost that they asked you or your family to pitch in?
I'm gonna be up, my mom pays for it.
Oh, yeah, that's fair, that's fair, yeah.
But I think it's just more like we, they get like very, like, I don't know, catering is expensive. Like, I think that's the only cost that I can think of that is why it would be that much. And then the merch, but I don't know, yeah, the merch.
So maybe that could be like, like revise it again.
Sure.
And maybe just put down, you know, like different categories, like food, transportation, merchandise, gifts. You know, kind of like they could just do a check off.
Sure, we can, we can revise it to create a little bit more specifics around the funding piece and exactly maybe an itemized list of what's actually being purchased, so that we have a clearer picture.
You think that would help? Good.
But then also, are we allowed to charge for something that's part of a class? You know, it's part of the ASB experience, right? So I think those two separate things that.
Maybe we can have, we can have some language at the bottom about ED Code around what is allowable, not allowable.
Excellent. Okay, anything else from anybody? Okay, we are going to, we are going to adjourn to closed session. So I adjourn this meeting at, whoops, six? Seven, seven, ten.